City choose to sell it six hundred and forty acres. That's all about, uh. Like I said, disposing of the property without engaging, joining property owners. The advantage to doing that is it doesn't require any coordination. Uh, and it allows the city to capture the value in its property. The disadvantage to that one is that you need to access that property, you need to acquire the right of way. And you need to design the roadways without the benefit of working in a, in a larger master plan context. Um, if you were to. Go with the second option, which whereby the city acquires the road right away. Um, and seeks to complete the Southern Loop Connector, uh. That six hundred and forty acres with good access, well, it'll raise the value of the property to make it more attractive. It'll make it usable compared to its landlocked position now. The disadvantage to that is that you are planning a roadway and, and. And master planning a portion of the property. Outside of the context of the complete master plan, so you don't, the end product is, isn't as good. And you ask simple questions like, well, where should the roadway go and, and how does that give us the best master plan? Uh, the third option, uh, where the city retains the property, acts as it own, as its own master developer. It plans, finances and sells the property ultimately to, uh, developers. Uh, there's a control, you know, you have the opportunity to really influence the outcome when you take on that master developer role. Uh, but it's a big lift in terms of additional city staff. Investments to, to get all the entitlements in place, put the right away in place, uh, and infrastructure. So there's a big lift there. The, uh, fourth option is. Uh, the city of Yale, working with the neighboring property owners to, uh. Joint market the property as a, uh, single. Master plan community, the way that it's owned. So working with the adjoining property. That's an attractive option in that, uh. You know, the parties can work together to, to achieve a common goal and realize the master plan vision. You get the Southern Loop Connector completed and that all adds value for both the adjoining property owners and the city. Uh, or their properties. The difficulty with that is maintaining common goals as you go through the, the process, um, and. The city may have goals that are focused in one area, private property owners may have goals that are focused in an area, another area. So there's some advantages and disadvantages to that one. The last option is to hold the property, um, and, you know, their minimal holding costs. Um, property can remain in its natural state. Um, the disadvantage, of course, is that you're not achieving the goals of the master plan. Uh, zoning that's in place and the Southern Loop Connector gets put on the back burner. So those are the five options that we see today. Um, and, uh, as I said, each one can be very complex, but. In the big picture, we think that those kind of characterize the path, paths you could choose to go down. Any immediate questions or comments or?
I just wanted to ask, were you able to get an answer from the neighboring owner as to what they wanted to do with their property?
Um, not, no, we had some conversations.
So whether you're for development or against it, there's a, a common theme is timeline. Well, this has been, I've been developing for over twenty years now. What would you think would be a reasonable expectation to how long this would take to develop? Cause I've seen some developments take forty years. I mean, do you see this being a forty year project, twenty year, ten year, five year? Like, how long do you see this being built out in your, since you guys deal with this stuff?
Yeah, I think it's a great question, you know. Go ahead.
One of, one of the concerns, I think, you know, when you talk about that, are you talking about which option? Because are we talking about all the, the land that's on that plan, maybe, or only a portion of it?
Because let's, let's talk about this, it's own master plan, it's been that way for twenty years now.
So if you're talking about the entire.
Let's say we go that route, what's the time?
I mean, it's, it's likely a twenty-five year plan to build the whole thing out. For most developers and it all depends on the market and there's many factors that play into what they can do and what they can accomplish in that time. I mean, could they move faster? Sure. But the market has to, to be there for them.
There certainly have few years of planning before anything significant, it happens.
That's a great back-up question. When do you see the first stick house going in there potentially? At least five years minimum, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm just guessing, but based on what I've seen before. Okay.
Councilor Wood.
Um, you say twenty-five years, um, is that an estimate you're, you're throwing out there for the six forty or for the, uh, twelve fifty?
That's an estimate based on.
Very good, thank you.
Questions, comments from the council? Any other, anything else, closing comments?
As you know.
Any others?
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to public comment. Um, please, if you wish to, um, address the council myself, please fill out one of these cards. If you haven't, um. They're still on the outside, there's still time. Three minutes, we'll try to get through everyone that has a card, um. We'll start off with Nicole Martel. And please state your name for the record and if you're a resident inside the city limits.
Hi, everyone, my name's Nicole Martel and I am a, I'm a resident right outside the city limits and. Um, there's so much I want to say on this subject and, but for my limited time here, I'd like to focus on the importance on, of conservation. Choosing to develop or not develop a piece of land like this comes with great responsibilities and with great consequences. So we must consider the bigger picture and the effects on everyone and everything. I learned a shocking statistic that the total area covered by the world cities is set to triple in the next forty years. Eating up farmland and natural spaces and threatening the planet's sustainability. So a natural area like the six forties is critical and irreplaceable. If we continue to design and build and at the, and, um, and if the planet can provide unlimited resources. Then this near doubling of the urban population here will mean a doubling of the natural resources required to build and operate our city, which is not sustainable. There are other options besides, you know, having to take away this natural land for development. By increasing the physical and environmental footprints of these metropolitan areas. The phenomenon leaves the destruction of wildlife habitat, fragmentation, uh, of the remaining natural areas. And you've said you'll leave some trails and green space, but that's very different than an actual natural ecosystem. And the roads and, um, the fragmentation means death and challenges for most wildlife. And they're already strained due to the compensating of the extreme lack of viable habitat. Not to mention destroying the intricate web of biodiversity, including trees, plants, soil from clearing the development. And so I'm asking that this land be preserved and protected in its wholeness. Um, it may have been once used for timber, but there's an opportunity to allow the trees to continue to grow and support the people of Yelm in a deeper way. For example, setting aside land for conservation has many benefits for humans, which are called ecosystem services. Undeveloped lands provide stormwater absorption, air and water purification, microclimate regulation. Cooling, reduction of greenhouse gases, carbon sequestration, flood control, erosion control, noise abatement. And supporting habitat for native plants and wildlife, which all will be lost in the process of land conversion if we develop. And it's important to note, I'm not just some environmental, you know, prehugger with my head in the sand about, you know, what's really important for the issues we face as a society. I know we need housing, but there is a huge amount of research and data speaking to the critical need to preserve our natural lands from development. So the impacts are really real and they affect all of us. On the surface, developing an area like this can seem like an economic boon for the city revenue. However, such development often produces and drains on local environmental resources. Shifts the economic burden of development in long-term, you know, it, or shifts the economic burden of development to the long-term residents of us here. Transpiration and energy costs raises crime rates, pollution and overwhelms the infrastructure and community systems, so. It's not here yet, he's just getting off work, he'll be here.
Um, Luis Oliverio, sorry.
Excuse me, is there a way to hear out here?
Yeah, there should be, the TV should be on, don't they not?
Crowd outside, guys.
We're trying to get the, we'll get the speakers going on out there.
Thank you.
Thank you for patience.
Okay, so, um, my name is Louise Oliverio and what she said, I totally agree with. And Nicole, and, uh, I have an option on my own that I would like to share with the council. For over a year now, I have been speaking to people within the young community online with regards to.
We can't hear you.
Uh, in regards to the six hundred and forty acres in Yelm. Designated as a master plan community in the comprehensive plan and joint plan with Thurston County February fourteen, twenty seventeen. Most people in Yelm, in the Yelm community have expressed to the Yelm council verbally, online or by email. That it is not their desire to continue to have massive housing developments in Yelm. Infrastructure in Yelm, i.e. roads and other resources cannot handle continued growth. As is planned here and has been allowed to grow out of. And with many, many planned communities in Yelm. The number of autos being used by housing development residents is approximately three per household. I don't think I need to add further statistics here as all in Yelm are aware of the situation. Some have asked that the six hundred and forty acres referred to herein should be left alone the way it is. I have mentioned online, I've spoken to one of the plan committee members at the last community meeting at the community center. Last month about my idea of how this acreage could be used to benefit most people in the community. Bring in tourism and reduce traffic. My idea is to create a Central Park West in Yelm, Washington, similar to that in New York City's Central Park. And some of you have been there, you will understand the concept. Uh, a lake, I suggest leaving as many trees as possible and keeping the land as natural as possible. At the wetlands area, which I was, have been told exists, possibly a nice sized lake where paddle boarding. Boarding and fishing would be available for the community to use. The park would include areas of grass for picnicking with blankets, as well as areas with picnic tables. Possibly also include fire pits for the community to utilize, um, meander around or with benches to sit around. With friends and family for recreation and conversation. Trails, in addition, a horse stable and trails for those of us who like to ride but don't have the resources of our own. Like riding paths and walking paths without the need for concrete, leaving the paths a natural part of the park. A separate area for adult games such as pickleball courts, handball courts, basketball courts, bocce area and or other outdoor game. Uh, adults would enjoy. Perhaps concrete tables for chess and or checkers with the boards already integrated on the tables. People would have to bring their own game pieces.
All thoughts, please? You can finish your last final thought here, yes.
Uh, an area for, uh, for children, uh, I've included and I've included a piazza. And if some of you have gotten the copy of this, you can include and see the rest of it. And it does meet the city of goals comprehensive plan in their policy and in their goals.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Release storm. Release storm. Thank you.
You do have a growing crowd out there, bold folks, concerned citizens. I only have a few questions. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have a microphone. And this is my concern. We have dollar signs flying all over the place and it's almost like the lottery. So I ask you. What is your budget? What is your plan to budget? What kind of income are you anticipating? Now, my sister taught fifth grade, she taught her kids extracurricular. You get a credit card, this is how you use it, this is how you budget. Part of her social studies and her math curriculum, the parents loved it. I taught my grandson, I taught my children. We need to learn how to budget. Now, we know that most of the counties in Washington State are having problems with their budget. In fact, Washington State is having problems with the budget. So when I go to a legislative session and I look at bills, the first thing I look at is the fiscal page. And when I see a goose egg or undetermined, my blood boils because it's like, all right. So how much is this going to cost us? We have an economic situation where our wallets and our pocketbooks are. Are growing moths out of it day to day and we're having problems paying our own bills. So now I ask you, what will it do to our taxes? What's going to, what's it going to do to the sales and property taxes? And what kind of services, and I hope you're thinking about this, is Yelm going to have to provide? Without grants to accommodate all of these people coming in. I'm not against growth, trust me, but I am for planning and budgeting. We need to be able to afford it and we need to anticipate the costs down the line. The cost of serving, not what they're going to bring in, because the developers are going to come in with money hanging out of their pockets. Oh, boy. But when they leave, what is the city going to be left with? What are the people going to be left with? I went to Walmart today and that traffic at one forty-nine PM was lined up all the way to Long Shot's and headed towards Walmart. In the middle of a Tuesday afternoon, what will it be like when we have more congestion? And what is the DOT in the state going to do to mitigate without a whole bunch of traffic circles? This type of congestion. So I'm saying to you, when you have the dollar signs, how much is it going to cost all of us? Not how much you're receiving, but where's your budget? I'd like to see a budget. Do you have a budget? Is there something the public can look at?
All thoughts, please.
That's all I have to say.
Budget is online, uh, the process is currently going right now, um, but all of our past budget documents are online available for the public to view. Um, we are in the process of doing our budget currently, um, the next couple of, uh, city council meetings will include budget discussions.
Does that include this development? Does that include the services?
Taxes or anything for this?
Keep that in mind as this is going forward, okay, and you make your decisions. Thank you very much.
Any other cards? I'll take them. Name, we didn't catch that.
Renee Storm.
Renee Storm. Is there any others? All right, um, Adrian Arias.
Unfortunately, I don't have the facts. The facts are still coming in, but I'm old enough now to have participated as a child and student in student government. City government and state government some. I know it's up to administration, I know it's up to a city council. Where the town goes. I've had that experience already, it's a direct experience. And I'm just here to, um, I'm here to say, I, in the best of all worlds. If we could speak, if you could hear. From the people, what wa, what Yelm would want to look like. For the people of Yelm, as well as visitors. As well as small businesses who are investing money to upgrade and make beautiful, offer classes. Like, there's one place in Yelm now that is doing that. An art, an art place that's offering classes for kids. I mean, a quality place, not a drive-through through the middle of town. Um, so that we, we are on, on the win place and not a destination. I, I, I think most people that I've spoken with, and it's just not one targeted population, but generally speaking, three sixty. Want a good quality of life here. Of course, you all have to pay the bills and we do too. And so the conversation is so important, I urge you to keep. An open conversation before you make decisions on something as important as this. Thank you.
Is Stanton Sprecher?
Yeah, he's out there.
So as he's coming up here, I do want to let folks know, there is nothing immediate that's going to be happening. Council has taken its time deliberately to hear from residents and community members to better understand what the community wants and needs. Um, it is currently a master plan community, um, but Stanton, if you wish to take the podium, please.
Thank you, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I'd like to start off with something that we probably can all agree with, that Yelm was a very special and beautiful place. And I know that we all would like to see what's in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Um, I'm here tonight because I've had the privilege to walk that six hundred and forty acres. It's a magnificent, um, walk and magnificent view of what can happen when a forest can regrow itself. And I think it's a beautiful asset for Yelm. And, um, I recently moved here about a year ago because it was such a beautiful city and it's very special. One of the things that I've noticed, um, and it's probably something I'm rather sensitive to, I'm a marriage therapy therapist. I worked for thirty years with adolescents. I currently work with first responders doing trauma work and thank you all of you first responders for the work that you do. Um, but I'm very attuned to children and adolescents and their needs. And what I've noticed in Yelm is that there's not a lot of places for adolescents to go. There's not a lot of places to hike, it's a beautiful city, but there's not a lot of places where kids can just go out and hike without having to drive. And I think that this six hundred and forty acres is a beautiful place. I think it's a wonderful place for people to be able to go for walks, a place for kids to be able to go to, a place for families to go to. And the times that I've been there while it was still open, there was lots of hikers, there were lots of joggers, there were lots of families coming and going. A lot of people using that place and I would love to see that stay. Um, I've come from a place where there was lots of development. And in that development, there was not a lot of room left or places for kids to go, for families to go. And I think that Yelm is a very special community, I think it has a lot of beautiful people, a lot of beautiful families. And I would like to see that land stay the way that it is, so that people can go there. It's a beautiful example of an ecosystem and I think it's a wonderful asset. And I think in the future, and what I've seen in the places that I've come from, is that a property like that will draw people in in the future. And I think that that'll be a beautiful investment for the city of Yelm, so, thank you.
Anyone else? We will have more opportunities, uh, there will be an open, uh, open, I'll say, um. Um, community conversation in the evening, it's like a test, small town hall, you all are more than welcome to attend that, it'll be on October ninth. At the community center, six PM, um, it'll be good opportunity for you to, to speak and, um, tell council again what your thoughts are. Council will have conversation with you, we usually have myself, um, city, or, uh, city police chief. And, uh, public service director and attendance to talk about projects that we're doing. Um, I, I know a lot of folks talk about roundabouts, we have a lot of roundabouts funded and planned, um, in the near future and happening next year. Um, the Yelm bypass as well, the Yelm loop is coming in next year. Um, we have a lot of transportation projects and infrastructure projects that we're working on, so, um, again, thank you for your comments though. I thought they were very respectful, they're very thoughtful and, um. We appreciate it, so thank you and we will have more conversations on this, there will be another discussion at the six hundred and forty acres. Uh, on the, um, upcoming study session next Tuesday. And so, before we move on, is there any final questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, please go ahead and stand up for the podium.
I just want to know what time.
Oh, um.
As you said, October ninth, but.
Six PM.
Okay.
Yep, is there anyone else?
Me, I forgot something.
Sure. If you can be really quick, ma'am.
I can be real quick, I attended the last meeting and was pretty true of all presentations. That I assumed and asked questions whether this had been paid for in these studies. It, it felt to me like somebody way out there from a desk, um. Writing up, uh, a schedule for Yelm that had nothing to do with Yelm. It had roundabouts coming at the intersection by, um, Starbucks and, and I wondered how, how. Where, where will people go? Where, where, it, it didn't make any sense at all, none. Because the backup from that intersection to the one at Hart Lake is just, I mean, a nightmare.
There is one plan for that one too, in McKenna.
So it just felt, it, it felt, it felt like an interceptor. And, and, and it didn't have anything to do with Yelm, it had to do with others deciding what was good for us. And, uh, it wasn't that they didn't ask, it was that they planned it already and showed it to us in beautiful pictures.
We are, that's all I have to say. Sure, and just to address that really quickly, we are in discussions with WAZDA, uh, with our legislative partners and the Barkis. We are, these discussions have been going on for years, um, we do announce them at city council meetings. I know it's not the easiest way for, to decimate, um, information to the public, uh, we do try to get that information out on our website. Um, through our surveys, through all, all sorts of things that we're trying to improve on for communication. Um, but those are, and I truly believe that they will move traffic here in Yelm, between the Yelm loop and as well as the plan, but, um. Loop or the, uh, roundabouts in Yelm as well as in Pierce County. The Pierce County one in front of McKenna, I, I can't stress enough how much that is going to change the, the traffic culture here in Yelm, it is going to move traffic. Um, but we, we're not talking about that, uh, thank you again for your comments. Um, anyone else before we move on? Yes, ma'am?
Question about the survey you put out for the six forty, cause it, it seemed very leading and it baited people toward, um. Choosing the master, you know, uh, planned community and it really kind of almost tricked people like, oh, what amenities do you want? Where it didn't leave it, um, open for people to actually give authentic feedback of whether they want the master plan community or not. And, and what our thoughts are on that, it was very limited, so I'm curious if you're planning on, you know.
If we do, sure, if we do, we've heard that, um, and if we do another one, we'll probably ask for, um, other options or whatever, um. That's based where folks, folks can, um, go ahead and say whatever they want regarding, um.
Cause it made it sound like you already have made your decision, it's already zoned for it, so it's like, we don't have a choice. And I feel like the people of Yelm should have a choice and a say on how much development goes through or how we do the development if it's mandated.
Sure, and it has been planned, it is been planned a master plan committee for over two decades. So it, it's not like this council or myself were the ones that implemented it. Absolutely, um, ultimately council is the one that can decide to, um, if they want to rezone, um, other options. But as it stands now, that's what we have, this is the presentation that you saw recently, the different options, um. And we'll go from there, but absolutely, we're gonna, we're not gonna rush this or anything, we're gonna make sure we have much more, um, public, um, hearings. And, um, public input as well. All right, last one before we move on, um, I don't have a name. Thirteen eight four zero ninety-three F, please state your name for the record, please.
Doctor David Beryl-Yay. Okay, I, all, just, all I want to do is to say that the room size is really too small. The, this has always been the problem because discourages people from coming at all.
This is the largest site that I've ever seen.
I've seen crowds, I've seen crowds before that were like four times the size when you had the big spot. And also it dwindles down, you know, that was probably a few years ago. But you don't see a big crowd and sometimes I, I look at online and I see only three or four people in the audience. Because everybody's discouraged from coming, his room is too small, you want to open up the room, people will, will come. Also, I noticed that the speakers, and before were terrible, you could never hear in the audience and I think it's done on purpose. I think it would be really a wise idea to have a speaker that everybody can hear. You know, I'm hard of hearing anyway, so it's, it's difficult, I, so I know the problem, you know, it just. The room is too small. This ought to be changed, a different venue, a bigger room, okay, with bigger speakers and big screens. So everybody understands what's going on and invite more people. I saw your sign out there on the the sign. Anyway, that was out there on the street. Wasn't big enough, wasn't announced enough. You need more P P R for the for the meetings, especially on this stuff is very important. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for your interruptions here.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We're moving on to consent agenda. September third, twenty twenty four, study met, study session minutes and September tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Can I get approval for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second by Councilor Wood, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any post say nay? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have a professional services agreement with Concorde Engineering. Cody, I believe it's you.
Yep. So before you is an on-call land surveying. So right now, we currently have one surveyor. We always like to have two in case there's conflict of interest or anything ongoing. We also, we broadcasted an RFP out about three months ago and got four responses back. There will be one more professional service agreement coming for another on-call surveyor that's out of those four. So this is the first of those two. This is Contour Engineering. They'll do surveying work to recheck like plat maps. They'll also do surveying work if we need to build a sidewalk or something like that. We can call them out instead of having to hire a company to do it. Be happy to answer any questions if you guys.
How does this surveying last? Like, once we get this done, how long does it last?
So even for state laws allows you to do three years with a one-year extension. So this will be three years. If they're a good company, we'll extend them for one year at the end of that and half to four years. Then we'll have to do this whole process again in that time.
Councilor Wood?
Fifty thousand dollars per year not to exceed amount. Can you elaborate on what exactly that means?
Yeah, so there's certain thresholds we can do. We probably, we spend right now anywhere roughly from ten to twenty thousand. We just, the fifty thousand's the lowest threshold you can do. So we set it the lowest threshold because we don't think we'll need more than that. So they will never in one year spend more than fifty thousand on surveying with this company.
So that's not a minimum. That's.
No, that's a maximum. Yes, that's a maximum.
Any other questions, comments? Look for them. Councilor Crossman.
Can somebody tell them to keep down? It's already here already. You can close the door.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry.
Questions, comments? Councilor Palmer?
Move to author a merit penalty to sign a three-year professional service agreement with Contour Engineering to provide on-call land surveying services for a not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars per year.
So we, so we, Councilor Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any post say nay? Motion carries. I can't get a pause for council member Hess on the lines. All right, moving on to old business. There is an unscheduled. Moving on to standing council committee reports, Public Safety Committee.
No meeting.
Okay. Moving on, Public Services Committee.
Yeah, so we had a meeting today. It was full of good stuff. So we talked about traffic. Since if you guys watching the council meetings, I asked about traffic a couple of weeks ago, so the department kind of pulled us in on a little bit of it, not and only come up again as well, because I'm sure there's a lot to it.
We are, we are scheduling for a study session, too.
Yep, study session. We're talking about traffic because that's a main concern. And for me, I'm I'm a guy, my personality is data. I like data, not feelings. So what is it really like? What's traffic really like? Like, what is enthralled? You know, when the developer comes in, like, okay, if the road comes in, he wants to build something, or a business, you know, they want to build something. What's that traffic like? So the city does a traffic count every two years and it's on odd years. So there's six places within the city that they track, they count traffic. So in that, you know, timeframe that they do the traffic count, it's the same six places every year. So they count, so they see, and they keep track every two years. And when you look at the data, what's really interesting, it it really hasn't jumped. It doesn't make sense. Like, as a feeling wise, you're like, no, that can't be. There's a lot more people. But then, you know, I think about, so I grew up here, a reservation road used to back up for a long ways. And how many people are there now? And there's no backup at all because of the traffic circle and how traffic flows. So that was super interesting. And then we learned that so if a double development comes in, they have to pay a fee for every traffic count that they increase, bring an increment to. So like a single family home, they have to pay. It's now up to about thirty five hundred roughly. It's not exactly that, but it's close to that number. So every, so I mean, that adds to the cost of your house. They have to pay a thirty five hundred dollar fee. Every business, every apartment complex has to pay a fee. There's a formula that determines, I mean, you know, smart people have this calculated out about how much traffic it impacts. And so they have to pay a fee, and then that money goes into building new roads, traffic improvement, stuff like that. So we don't the average person is not paying for the new roads. Everything development paid for the road. So if we want roads to be built, if we want some kind of traffic improvement, development businesses pay for that traffic improvement. The average taxpayer does not. Which I, that was something I learned as well. I didn't know that. I thought it was, we all did, but new people. And then we talked about go for mitigation. If you haven't been following along, the state has demanded that each city county has a habitat conservation plan. So we have to have over five hundred acres, most likely plans not finalized yet. Go for mitigation property that cannot be touched. It has to be, and it has to be the certain type of property. This can't be any property. Like, we can't use the six forty for conservation land because it doesn't meet the requirements. So we're looking at properties for that within the next few years and figure out ways to purchase those properties because, you know, we have to buy it. So we have to have conservation land, and it's better to have conservation land outside of city limits. So you keep people inside the city limits. That's what cities afford. It's for people and the rural areas to keep rural. So we're looking for lands that we can cover, you know, keep in conversation, companies. Thank you. I, he helped me out earlier with that word sometimes, no. And then there's another fee. What's that for? Oh, go for mitigation fee is about two thousand dollars a lot roughly. So another price to the cost of your home, if you want to buy a new home, they have to pay into that conservation. So all the developers have to pay into that land that's being set aside. Right now, it's approximately two thousand dollars a lot. So that's, you know, five, what's that? It's over five thousand dollars that pay in this, you know, to build. And then we talked about Berry Valley would be coming up next week for a zone change so that can they put in some affordable housing, which will make the mandatory a certain amount. The rent will be no more than, you know, whatever that it comes to. There's a calculation for it that the state requires. So that will be coming up. And then in those specific lanes we talked about. That's all the really good stuff. That took up most of the conversation. There's a few little things, you know, the striping got done in the city. Some of the roads that were looking pretty shy got striped.
Yeah. Councilor Wood?
I just got a quick question. You mentioned that on the odd years, we have a a six different places in the city, within the city, is that?
I think state limits, yep.
Because that they, that they track. Now, when they track that, because it strikes, it strikes me odd that the numbers haven't changed. And I'm curious if that is between like certain hours of the day that they run this test, or is it like twenty-four hours a day for a certain?
Cody could talk a little about it.
So the tests are run twenty-four hours for twenty-four straight hours, and it's every trip that goes on that road.
So just one twenty-four hour.
Hundred twenty-four hour period around the same time each time we do it every two years. There's, and then we do, it's a three-day study where they do three different, and they give us a twenty-four hour average.
Specifically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. But those, so and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought what what I just heard was that in a lot of several cycles that they that we tested traffic, traffic has not increased?
It's actually decreased, which is surprising.
Did they take into, just curious, and of course, I've been, I can find out some more information here, but I'm curious if that has anything to do with traffic not moving? If traffic's not moving. That just seems, I mean, I live here just like the rest of us. That, that doesn't add up.
Yeah, so the same, the same cars, it's the two little black strips you see when you drive over them, they bump bump and they register a car. It doesn't matter if you drive slow or fast. It's still getting registered.
The entire traffic, as we know, starts slowing down here and then rolls through, you know, for hours on end. That would, wouldn't that bring down your traffic numbers? Because, yeah, there, you know, less cars rolling over.
I like how where where are they going? Did not turn around and go somewhere else. I understand that, but it only go through Yelm.
Councilor, Councilor Palmer?
Yeah, I got one more. So who do we, who does the trap? So is that D O T or is that a company that's?
Company. We hire a third-party company to do it.
Same one we've been using the whole time?
Um, I don't, we've used it last two years. I don't know before that. We use the same company because it was before I was here. We've been doing it for probably twenty-plus years, accounts every odd year. WASDOT and TRPC both do traffic counts as well. So there's three different sources we get counts from, and they're all compiled to make sure that they all match, right? Because you do get, it's, I've lived here since eighty-nine and I have the same feeling you do, like, hey, traffic's, you know, horrible, and it's weird to see the numbers when they come back and they're lower. You're like, oh, something must have went wrong. But consistently see it from all three entities will be weird. And that's what we're seeing.
How many, how many people drive through our streets every day?
Roughly about fifty thousand is what we get going from one end to the other. Driving just passing through town, not living in the city limits, about fifty thousand. And that was TRPC numbers that came up with that modeling. Anything else for the Public Services Committee?
Question for Cody.
Go ahead, Councilmember Rass.
Director Colt. My question when we were talking about the traffic count, are they put at the same location? And what I mean by that is, is it right before the traffic circle that goes to the bypass loop? And is it at the, right before on five oh seven, before it even gets close to town? And at five oh seven, either before yet, before Walmart or after Walmart? Where where are these things put?
Yeah, so they're placed in the same locations. There are six locations. Each is an entrance to town. You can't get into town without driving over one of these.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate clarification of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess unless you off-road it, I guess you could.
Councilor Crossman, anything else?
This question, the this asks, if we look at the data, the flashing speeding light, that's all like Collins, for instance. Does that track traffic? Like, how many people's speed or anything like that? Like, we can't.
We can, but those signs are not, are not equipped to do that. But if we paid for that service, you could, but those are currently not.
Anything else for the Public Services Committee? Moving on to Finance Committee.
No meeting.
Yeah, we're on General Government Committee.
And we met just this last hour and we covered honestly, mostly the things that were brought up today with the six hundred and forty acres. We went through those five options that the gentleman brought forward to us. We discussed the biennial budget coming up. And there will be seven presentations over two meetings from each department. So we kind of need to be able to see all of that. We talked about an acquisition of property coming up here in the executive session. We talked about future agenda items as well.
Thank you. Mayor City Minister Stafford Portt, Todd.
Nothing else to add, Mayor.
All right, nothing else?
I don't have anything.
Right. We will be having a study session, next upcoming study session. We will be talking more about the six hundred and forty acres. We'll get more of a robust conversation specifically from council, discuss what council wants to do it. It's not necessarily an engagement with the community on that one, but council or community is absolutely welcome to attend. There will be other discussions as well, including the committee conversations coming up in two weeks. So I encourage you to attend that as well. And we'll likely have another open house or something else for the public later on. So we will still be having more discussions for the community. Other than that, I have an E D C meeting tomorrow, Economic Development Council meeting tomorrow. And it's about it. So we're gonna go, excuse me. Before we go into executive session, we do have council member reports. We'll go ahead and start with Councilor Wood.
I've had no meetings, no report.
All right, Council Richardson.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Crossman?
Would like to say thank you to all that stay. A lot of people come and they leave as soon as they're like, oh, I took my business, I'm gone. And I don't like that very much. I, I really appreciate you guys taking out. I have to be here. It's great to see you here. Say to the whole thing, will you, please? I would like to encourage you all, since there's a lot of public here, usually not. If you haven't been around Yelm lately, a lot lately, and noticed things, there's a lot of new businesses and remodel businesses. Yelm's looking really good. The streets have been doing a good job, Public Services have keeping it clean, keeping everything mowed and tidy. And then also, there seem to be a lot of people that's out, like picking up garbage, keeping the streets clean, everything that. I just want to applaud all those folks that do that. They're seeing, they're noticed, you know, if anybody's in the audience, thinking you do that. When you travel, I I go all over for my work. And so I see all these other cities. I think Yelm's just doing a really great job of looking, looking good. So, and that takes all of us working together, not just a few people. So just want to say thank you for that. And that's all we got.
Councilor Kingizer?
Thank you. He kind of beat me to it. I was going to say very much the same thing. Thank you all for being here tonight. That means a lot. Oftentimes, there really are only two or three people here in the audience. And sometimes as a counselor, we just, we just wonder who's behind us. You know what I mean? Is is we're working hard to do the research, hear you on many different avenues and many different levels. So I very much appreciate your involvement.
Councilor Hess?
Yes, Inter-City Transit Authority. We had a wonderful meeting last week. They are in the process of getting ready to do their five-year plan for the next five years. One of the things that I asked them to please consider is looking at Yelm and preparing to find a way to either put into the budget or to plan for more transit to come to our area instead of just being bus ninety-four. I have suggested maybe some thirty-five passenger buses that stick around just in Yelm to move people around to Safeway and all the various spots from outside. They are going to take that into consideration. I'm hoping to see some improvement on that. In addition, I also want to thank all those who attended this evening, also those who happen to watch online, whether it's now or later. And to all those that reached out to us as council members about the various issues being going on. Their emails and their communications are appreciated. So thank you very much.
Councilor Palmer?
I got a question about that. So with intercity transit, I'm actually curious to know how much money we spend on that and whether they're actually worth our tax dollars, because I think we might be able to do a better job than intercity transit does.
I believe they're all taxing the authority, aren't they, intercity transit?
I think it's part of portion of tax or something like that, but I want to know if we can get out of that and do our own, and do our own thing.
I'm sure it would be. I'm sure Councilmember Hess could look into that.
If I could add to that a little bit, I know the Transportation Policy Board with TRPC already operates R T, which is covers here in Yelm, all the way around the South County that got unfortunately mixed when when it's back several years back when intercity transit had to downsize due to, due to lack of revenue through.
They're, they're up right now.
Right now, they are. I understand that. But I'm saying at that point is when R T was developed and put into play and functions primarily on grant money as well. But there is an opportunity there to potentially look at being more so part of that group. And and I think what Councilmember Palmer is just referencing is that I think point two percent or point zero two percent that the taxpayers agreed to, that the, all the smaller jurisdictions in the South County aren't, aren't held to that to that tax standard because they're, they're not offered service through intercity transit. So I think based off, I think if if I may, I think based off of the the ridership that that has been, that we've witnessed or lack thereof, I should say, I think it's something that, a serious conversation that we should probably have.
We can have that conversation. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Hess?
No, nothing else.
All right, Councilor Palmer?
Uh, no new meetings, nothing to report.
Councilor Kaminsky?
I didn't have anything for three weeks, and now I've got a whole pile of notes. Firstly, somebody please thank that last gentleman and tell him that we also want bigger chambers for our council. We're working on that, too, in the budget. I had an Arts Commission meeting. We talked about our budget request coming up and some other projects that we're doing. I had a law and justice meeting, and the focus on that was a guest speakers on from the election situation. We had Sheriff Sanders come and discuss what they were doing to prevent violence on election night. They were searching the dark web for threats. They were contacting the FBI. And they didn't, they're hoping that Thurston County just got, gets bypassed for violence and nothing happens. But they think the worst that could happen is somebody bombs a ballot box or something. So that's what they were talking about. And So that's what they were talking about. And I also auditor Mary Hall was there and I asked her. Since the sheriff was talking about the integrity of the external party elections, I asked her about the integrity of the internal party elections. Was, was everything squared away? Did everything look good? I was very diplomatic because I didn't want to ruffle any feathers. But she assured me that everything was on the up and up. And invited me to come and take a look on election day if I want to see how all the ballots go and how secure everything is, so.
And they do have a live feed too.
Yeah, they have a live feed, so I might take her up on that. And then very interesting meeting of the Nisqually River Council. I had took a lot of notes since you're a captive audience. I could read all of it or I could do the short form. So to you guys. But notes, okay. Uh, we had Greg Bouchard of the Mount Rainier National Park speak. And he wrote a book called The Effects of the Nisqually Tribe Plant Gathering at the National Park. And he basically did a two hour history of everything about the mountain. The indigenous people that used to collect plants, their way of life. Then he talked about when, uh, George Vancouver discovered perfumed sound. And all the visitors started to coming and the railway came and they pretty much decimated the mountain. So Mount Rainier became a national park before there were any national parks in the country, really. And they did it to preserve the mountain. And they said as little as twenty years ago, people started to see wild bear and elk out there. Where they had been, just they disappeared because of the way people were. So it was just a very interesting talk on plants mostly. And of course, then they banned everybody from picking plants because nobody did it the right way, except the Indians did. They flourished on the mountains for thousands of years. It's been archologically proven, architecturally, ar- archeologically proven. That they've been there for thousands of years. Uh, so then in order to collect plants again, they had to issue permits for the Indians to go and do what they would normally have done. And, um, they talked about Princess Pine as one of the main plants, which is actually a tonic that is just like aspirin. And that's one of, one of their indigenous plants that they used for healing. And the red cedar, the inner part of the bark, among other parts of it, they said is exactly like vortex. And its ability to repel water. So I thought that was interesting. And then the other one was bear grass. And then Rose from the tribe, uh, who has now become a cultural connection to the Northwest Trek. She told us a story, um, she was having some real bad health issues and grandma said, here, take this princess pine. She mashed it up into a tea. She took the tea, went back to her doctor and he goes, your kidney disease is all healed. And so what we knew before, we forgot and threw away and now we have it back. So, and Northwest Trek, so they have a twenty thousand dollar new foundation. And any money they collect, they are giving to the schools to, um, help pay for, uh, entrance into the park. And get discounts. The Yelm seventh graders are doing tree planting and water testing in the Nisqually River as we speak. And the, the new tram is open and they offered us a ride. So I was, I think the only one that put up my hand and said, I'm going on that tram. And it was very cool because we saw every single animal in the seven hundred acres or whatever it is, except for the moose. There's only two mooses, my moose nice, we didn't see them. But we did see the elk were in their running season. So watching them run around, watching the bulls chase each other and Bella, doing their bellowing. It was some pretty interesting stuff. So I did enjoy that very much. And lastly, the annual Nisqually Watershed Festival is on September twenty eighth. It's a lovely event on the, uh, the refuge, Billy Frank Refuge, lots of things and science built into it for the kids. That's my report.
All right, now we will, we'll be going into an executive session. So basically the, the meeting's over. Um, you can stick around if you want, but we're just gonna adjourn when we come back. Um, so for the record, uh, we are, council will meet in executive session for thirty minutes to discuss the acquisition of real estate. For RCW four two point three zero point one one zero one B. Uh, we will be there exactly, we'll end at seven thirty.
All the regular special, the regular meeting back to order. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor King Heiser. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any who say nay? We are adjourned.